Okay, call the meeting to order. It is four thirty-five. At the regular meeting mess, January third, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve.
Well, second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright. So move. Uh. Good, under correspondence. Road race? Yeah. Yeah. Your motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
I.
Okay, uh, you can hear us still?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we got some emails and some correspondence from Kristen Devilla regarding the road race. And we kind of, we needed more information, uh, like, were you looking, what part of the road on East Shore were you looking to utilize? Uh, were you looking to shut the road down?
No, no road closures. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we, we would just use like a small area in the, I mean, we haven't seen the, um, the location, but this would be the fourth town that we've done, and we just do a small mile around whatever area we can sort of finagle, um, some space, and we don't do road closures or any police or anything like that. We just, um, are looking to raise some money for Hole in the Wall gang camp and also help our running club grab the beautiful town of Morris.
Okay. Any idea how many, uh, participants?
Um, we have had about a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
That's pretty substantial. Uh, and you set up down to Town Beach, I would assume?
Yeah, yep.
Uh, what time of, what's the date you're looking for?
Oh, it's February nineteenth.
Coming up quick.
Yeah.
Uh, well, if you could put something together, like a plan of what you plan to do and maybe utilize Google Earth to show, you know, the starting to finish, uh, any insurance that you may have that would cover, uh, this location as well. And I don't know if we could, how much lead time do you need to have the approval and get people to show up to your race?
I mean, we'd love it ASAP so we could get it going, um, but, you know, I know that, that Kristen's concern was parking if it snowed, so I did tell her that we would be fine to do a snow date if, you know, that was an issue for you guys.
Okay.
We don't need a lot of time, but. But yeah, we need to get moving.
If they're running, I mean, they're not closing the road and they're parking at Town Beach, isn't that just a beach rec approval? It's not really us.
Well, the other races have come to us in the past, when they use the local roads, it's where the local traffic authority. Uh, this would probably be similar to Sandy Beach Triathlon, except less intensive, obviously. There was the other one that they do all hundred and sixty-nine towns, I guess. There's an organization, yeah, similar to that. Uh, if they got things together for us for our next meeting?
Yeah, especially, uh, some kind of, uh, map that they're gonna use.
Yeah.
Cause the main concern is run, running if they're going into one oh nine.
Yeah, they go the other way.
Oh, okay.
If you're going only a mile, I imagine you're going up Paris and Hill and not as far as, uh, point, March point. And then.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the map right now. We definitely wouldn't go out to one oh nine.
Yeah, yeah, you go the other way on East Shore.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could do that and, uh, get it to us as soon as you can.
Okay, um, I could make up a map of what the course would be for sure, um, and we have insurance.
Okay, can you do, uh, like an additional insured or, uh, certificate?
You would be on it, yes.
Yeah, Tana Morris.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, and, uh, we can get all the details ironed out, uh, at that point.
Okay.
Alright.
Is that something we can email, or you said join the next meeting?
Oh, you can email him.
Okay.
Maybe you have Kristen's email?
Yes.
Oh yeah, send it to her and then, uh, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Great, well, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. Well, we do have executive session next. I think it's probably easier if we leave the room versus making everyone get up.
Yeah, this was a tight quarters.
Yeah. That's, warning. Hey, we came out of the second session at five oh two. Is there a motion to approve the union con?
I'll make a motion to approve the union contact dated July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirty of twenty twenty-six.
Now, I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Oh, so move. Thank you.
I'm gonna accuse myself.
Erica's leaving at five oh two.
Have a good night, guys. You too, Erica.
Bye. Okay, we received another petition for, well, it's different, uh, a petition for vote on voting machines to enact an ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments within the town of Morris. And we, the undersigned pursuant to Connecticut General Statute seven dash seven hereby petition, the town clerk of Morris requesting that to vote on any special town meeting agenda item. Call for the enactment of an ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments within the town of Morris whenever scheduled. It'll be by a yes or no vote on the voting machines. And there's a petition question, shall the town of Morris adopt the ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments, step forth below? And nothing, have to read it. All types of cannabis establishments as defined Connecticut State statutes to include all cannabis establishments, producers, dispensary facilities, cultivators, micro cultivators, retailers, hybrid retailers, food and beverage manufacturers, product manufacturers, product packagers, delivery services, and transporters are and shall be prohibited within the town of Morris. Previous one, I believe, had the same type of, uh, ordinance on it, and it was determined by advice from our legal counsel that that language would have to be modified.
That's right.
Should be modified. So I would say that this should go to our legal counsel, I believe they already have a copy of it, I believe, uh, programs, uh, probably sent him a copy already. So he's aware of it. So he really, I think our feeling at the last meeting was to go to referendum.
Right.
We'll have to see what this, how this affects that decision. I, I do feel I should go to referendum myself.
Well, I, I think that's what this petition for, to go to a machine vote.
Says machine boat, vote at a special town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Generally, that's not, that's not how we've had it done in the past.
No, we've had a referendum in the past.
We would go to a special town meeting and adjourn to referendum.
That's exactly right.
Right. So, Mike will have to look at this and see what.
And Michael, and while Mike is looking at it, I have the question that's proposed on this ordinance is kind of misleading because we've already did a referendum on dispensary facilities. And it was voted that the town does not want a dispensary facility in town, so why are we putting this back on an ordinance that was already voted on? It's kind of misleading because when people are reading it, they'll see dispensary and they'll say, but we already voted on that. So I don't believe that dispensary should be in the ordinance. And the other question I have, and we have to look into delivery services and transfers because as I explained before, in the state of Connecticut, there's fifty thousand medical cards out there. And right now, the last thing I read, the state of Connecticut is actually looking into companies that will deliver cannabis in the state of Connecticut. So I don't know if that would affect what's on this proposal. Okay, but the thing I, I wanna tell everybody is, whatever question you put on this in signature, and I'm not a lawyer, I've done referendums before, but what I was told was whatever question is on this referent, on this piece of paper, and you get the signatures, that's what has to go on the ballot. But right now, our attorney is saying there should be something in there for grandfather because we've already established one cannabis farm. So just try to get, make sure you get your language right when you get into signatures, otherwise it's not, it's not gonna be any good.
So you want a motion to send to town council?
Yes, I'll make a motion to send to town council.
I'll second, I'll add any questions or concerns.
Right. And one, like I said, dispensary facility, we've already voted on that, and I don't know why that's on.
Can't remember the, the exact wording of the question on the ballot that time, was it retail?
I don't remember. I thought it was dispensary, but I don't have that.
That was retail.
Yeah.
Oh. So I'll have to see if we, you know, what the.
Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh. Uh, the previous petition, uh, or ordinance was sent to the ordinance committee. They met, they modified it. It was found by the town clerk that the meeting wasn't valid, so they're meeting again Monday to revoke the change of the ordinance to send it to us. Okay. They'll be coming back. And that included the grandfather clause for all, I remember the exact wording, any pre-establishment already approved by the town.
Right.
So. Uh, appointments, say, none, refunds, abatements, all the comments. And.
Let's just curious, why was the ordinance committee deemed invalid their last meeting?
Uh, they found that the agenda wasn't posted on the board prior to the meeting. Proper notice. So they're meeting again, I believe it's Monday to redo it. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brian Burns, son of Lenny and Barbara. Uh, I just wanted to go through a couple of, uh, dates because I'm a little worried that the town is, um, not in compliance with the statutes on timing for these things. Um, seven dash two requires that you hold a town meeting when you receive a proper petition within twenty-one days. It's my understanding that you receive the petition, the original petition, on December fourteenth, which would have required you to hold the town meeting by January fourth. Uh, obviously, no such meeting was, was held. Uh, and then General Statute seven dash seven uh, requires that if you receive a, uh, petition to adjourn a town meeting to machines or any question that's gonna be held, that be held within seven and fourteen days of when you receive that petition, which would mean that that adjourned town meeting to machines would have to be held on January twentieth. I understand no such meeting has been noticed, no such adjourned town meeting, so I, I, right now, it seems like you're discussing sending something back to your town attorney, waiting for an opinion, and then taking action further bringing the town into violation of the statutes. Um, also, there was discussion of having a referendum rather than town meeting. It's my understanding these statutes are not discretionary. It's not up to the board of selectmen at this point to decide whether to go to a referendum or to have an adjourned town meeting. Um, these statutes are mandatory, uh, that it must be a town meeting, and if you receive their requisite petitions, you must adjourn it within seven, fourteen days. So it just, it encourage, uh, the board to, uh, be wary of those statutes and mindful when, uh, scheduling things so that they aren't, you know, further in violation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I'm just wondering. I mean, at the last meeting, I, I think I certainly have an opinion about things and I would like to be heard, and I think other people would too. And so, are we talking, I mean, you're talking about a town meeting, but and, and will that be the meeting where everybody gets to put it out there? Um, and, and even to that meeting, I found out about it until last minute. I think, yeah, we do need to get some notice of the meeting and for the people who can be heard and their concerns can be heard.
Definitely, yeah. It was our feeling at the last meeting, and then we didn't have this new petition yet, which does complicate things. Uh, it was our feeling at the last meeting, I believe, to hold a special meeting with a proper, uh, ordinance and adjourn from that special meeting to a referendum. That way, the voices of the people throughout the town would have an opportunity, not only by absentee ballot, but also from six AM to eight PM to come out and vote. The more people you get, I think the better, people, their voices are heard. It's a, to me, it's a better way to do it than just the town meeting, especially something like this.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a clarification. I believe the petition for the adjourned town meeting to machines has the effect of running like a referendum. It just has a different name. So when you adjourn to machines from a special town meeting and you notice it, if you run it just like you would a normal, uh, referendum.
This doesn't say anything about adjourning to machines. It says voting at a special time meeting shall be done by voting machines.
It is adjourned town meeting, so if you look at General Statute seven dash seven.
Yeah, but.
Um, that, that's the statute that's being invoked in that petition.
I'm going with this and also with our town attorney.
That's, that's not opined on seven dash seven?
If you excuse me.
Sorry.
That's why we were gonna bring this to the town attorney.
Oh, understood. I just wanted to clear a patient that it's.
I'm not an attorney, I'm not, you know.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm a little confused, so, I've been at these meetings. So we went and we had an ordinance. The ord, that was submitted to you guys. The ordinance went to the ordinance committee on January ninth. They added a little clause there as far as accept as lawfully and previously applied by the town. They had that little addendum, I guess, that's called grandfather, which I don't think that's the right term, but we know what we mean, right? And then that was then supposed to go back to you guys for approval, and then my understanding at that point was that then it would go to either town meeting talk and then schedule a public referendum where we would vote on it.
Right.
So now there's another petition that's thrown a monkey wrench into that.
Well, it calls.
Seemed like we were going on like a really good.
Exactly.
Moods, open conversation.
Yep.
You know, everything's, you know, we're dotting our i's really well, but now it seems like it's derailed again.
Yeah. Uh, we are waiting for the new ordinance from the ordinance committee. Uh, and we had thought we'd just bring that to the Board of Selectmen's meeting and set up a, a call for a special meeting, town meeting that would adjourn to referendum, but at the special town meeting, people would be able to talk, it'd be moderated, people voice whatever side they are on or in between or whatever, they could do that.
But the ordinance committee who met on January ninth has not given you a copy of the ordinance that they had with those additional words.
No.
Are they on a time limit?
They will be meeting again on Monday to, and probably send it right to us then, and we can send that to our attorney. He has to review the ordinance for us. It's the same procedure we always do, you know, for an ordinance.
Right, because it just seems to me that whatever you have now, as far as what have you got there, some new.
Yeah, basically, this kind of looks like.
And I'm wondering.
What was submitted before.
Like the whole thing, you got derailed again.
I think the wording on both petitions is the same.
Is it the same?
Section of the voting on voting machine.
Okay. Yep.
The wording is exactly the same.
Yeah, so again, that wording would have to change.
Kind of back to square.
No, I think once we get the ordinance, yeah. I think once you get the ordinance from the ordinance committee, we can move forward with that.
Okay.
So, but again, we have to listen to our town council.
Of course. And, and why was the, uh, ordinance meeting, um, not, not approved or?
It wasn't proper noted, properly noticed.
It was, it was on the agenda.
It wasn't, uh, posted here in Town Hall.
But it was on the town website.
Yes, yeah. So they're re, gonna meet Monday and reaffirm what they already did at their last meeting.
What time were they meeting on Monday, do you know?
What time they normally meet?
I'm not sure.
I thought of, I thought it was.
Four, yeah, it was last time.
I think so. Yes, bye.
Uh, with this posting on the, uh, board, uh, this is not the first time this happened with many boards and commissions. Where's the oversight with this? Because this is really sloppy, uh, control on the town standpoint, and what's to say it wouldn't happen again? What, what, where, where's the controls in that?
Uh, it's human error.
I mean. Sometimes, huh?
I, I'm not in charge of the board. I don't, I, I don't, I don't. The posting board is not the selectman's deal, doesn't fall under our purview. It was mistake.
And.
Bill.
I'm just sort of curious with all this, you know, stalling, I guess is the best word I can come up with, I mean, um, what does the town do now? When, you know, time is like on hold and if another applicant comes into planning and zoning. I mean, you know, like, it's my question due to last time, is as the chief elected officer in Morris sworn to protect the health and safety and welfare of the town, why can't there a moratorium to put on and just put everything on hold until all these meetings and votes are done? So planning and zoning doesn't screw something up again.
Currently, that's, currently, that's, uh, the governance of this is under planning and zoning, it's land use, and it'd be up to them to put in place a moratorium if they decided to.
Selectmen can't do, you don't have that authority as a chief officer of the.
We can, we can check with our attorney, but I don't believe so, no. We don't get involved in land use regulations.
I, I, I would assume everything you can do, you can overs, you know, supersede it, anything you want. You guys are elected to protect.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
Well, I, I would recommend that you talk to the town attorney about that because I could see planning and zoning getting application in in the next couple of days and, 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 and acting upon that while everybody in town here is waiting to vote.
I'm sorry.
So that maybe answers my question. I'm wondering how is it that somebody was able to, uh, get a permit to grow marijuana, and that was through a planning and zoning?
Yes.
Issue, okay, so, yeah, I guess we kind of do need to make it clear that, well, i- if we want to, that that's not gonna happen, and so, and they have the authority to allow that, I, I, apparently?
The cultivation of cannabis, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yes.
Excellent. So you're, where you do have, um, you know, where you can't help us, it sounds like, is to push this through, that we can start to have that vote, so the town can be heard, and we can all vote on if we do or do not want this. I know a lot of our boroughs up here have already done it, and they did it when we did retail. So I'm a little curious as why this wasn't included when we did do that initially, because I'll be honest, I think most of us thought it was.
Right.
So we were all very surprised, we were like, whoa, wait a second, we already voted on that, and then I heard, oh, no, that was just for retail, and like, whoa. It's like, I don't think a lot of us understood that. So there was a little bit of, everyone else around us has already voted on that, but it's been like a done deal for, I'd like a year now, and for us, we're, I think, I was really shocked to have to hear this and come back, and the communication has not been really very clear as to when these meetings are and what the agendas are, and um, it feels like it's very last minute. So something like this is pretty important, especially since we already had a vote. So the clarity, why we're not having it immediately, why there is this delay, and an attorney has to look at it and review it and change it seems a little suspect. It just doesn't feel right, and I don't know why it's that there's such a delay on this when there wasn't when we did retail. So why is this so different?
Here, here. I'm trying, I'm trying to, um, when I did the referendum for the dispensaries, I was trying to be proactive on it. And that was before Public Act twenty-one dash one came out. So we really didn't know too much about it. Uh. When we checked with the attorney, the question that was on there was just a dispensary at the time. And I don't know if I could have went further into saying cannabis could, uh, my thought was a moratorium to give planning and zoning a little more time to think about it. And from what I'm finding about a moratorium is, a moratorium is only a delay process. They still have to establish some kind of outline of what they want in town. So, that's what was my thought back when this first came out, not knowing how big this was gonna be in the state of Connecticut.
Agreed, but I also feel that knowing when someone came with an application for a farm here, that knowing how the town felt about it and how we voted on it, it shouldn't immediately been brought to the vote. Like, oh, wait a second, we missed this. We got retail, but we didn't get the dispensary stuff. Because you look at Great Barrington, you look at Watertown, and it's not even what's gonna be brought into this town, it's the stench. It is the smell that's gonna come with that that will permeate everyone's house here. That, that's my concern with that, is like, I don't want that. I don't want to open my window in the summer, be out on my boat, and be smelling that all day and day. So I think when with that happened, we should have, property, P and Z never should have been able to approve any of that until it came back to the town to say, hey.
Anyone else before we go back to? Uh, well, John, and.
Uh, so just going back to, to the original referendum, because I think there was a, a comment made in one of these meetings that the town lawyer actually believed that would, would be leaves, present time, that the original referendum would actually, push, pump, the shove, would actually cover the, uh, or did I hear wrong?
The cultivation?
Yes.
I, I've got, I have the opinion from the town's attorney in front of me, and he said that the term sale is using the cannabis referendum statute is broad and is not confined to only retail sales. That, that's from the town attorney. And, and just as another note, the last application for cannabis was, was not just for cultivation, but it was for processing and packaging, which makes it, makes it more of a commercial operation than, than just growing cannabis out in the field.
Okay, that's right.
Thank you. Um, if it's the board's opinion that it's not within their power to put any moratorium on it at this point, and you think that's properly within P and Z, has there been any communication from the board of selectmen to the planning and zoning officially advising them of this petition process and the potential for a stand, town meeting? And if not, could there be, so they're formally on notice that this process is, um, taken?
They're aware of it, uh, no formal process was done to make them aware of it, but we could, we will do that, let them know what's happening here, and, uh, so they're aware of it.
Yeah, that's the sense of urgency we are all feeling.
I think it did come up at their meeting, too.
Kind of do anything until we vote, we need to hurry up and vote.
Well, we can recommend it to them, but planning and zoning has put a lot of time into this setting regulations that they didn't have enacted under the first application. And we've had a town planner help them along, which is, she is very knowledgeable about cannabis in the state of Connecticut.
Which is fabulous, right? But we don't want it. At least most of us don't. So I don't really think we should spend any more time and effort on this if we're, until we do a vote. A- a- and, maybe the whole town does want it, that's, but everybody has a right to vote, right?
Uh-huh.
Absolutely.
And, you know, if you're gonna send a letter to P and Z about, you know, the, the process that there's petitions on board, hopefully you to include an opinion from Attorney Ryback to say, listen, P and Z, don't accept any applications or even discuss this cannabis stuff until all this is done. Hopefully Mike could add something like that to it.
Yeah, go forward if everybody's, um, not in agreement to this.
Wasting time and money and resources.
Okay, anyone else? Richard?
Uh, basically, in hearing all, uh, what's going on is, I would say that, uh, because even with state Connecticut, you've got uh, towns, uh, uh, kind of doing things, uh, differently, uh, than, let's say, before, because, uh, this is a, a subject matter that, uh, is changing in terms of facts and, uh, information. And so for us as a town to, uh, be making decisions, uh, uh, without having all the most current knowledge, uh, and maybe we should wait until some of this information gets settled out here in the state of Connecticut. It, uh, some for the town of Morris to go ahead, for example, of how, uh, marijuana, one way or the other. While I think there are some terms of information, I think we should wait, uh, as a town, uh, before, uh, uh, things change, and if, if we have, uh, especially the, the people in town. Uh especially there are there's people in town. Wanted to make a decision before more information is available. And that should be the case, uh people have the right, I think, to. Uh make a negative on cultivation. Uh if that's where the good on town stand.
Okay. You're talking perhaps made a moratorium?
Right.
Right. John?
I I uh the fact that to say, I have to rebut that for me. What's un what's unsettled, I mean, the state of Connecticut had made their laws. Dispensaries are opening, I mean, there's no reason to wait, nothing's gonna, I mean, things may change, but. I mean, I think it's settled as it's settled. What is it there?
How did this still go forward, the gentleman up front said that they can still vote on this and zoning? And push this through when the town is really not very happy about what's going on? I think this should be frozen and discussion, vote, whatever we need to do, but you you can't just push it through and. I mean, all those poor people that live next to this place is gonna smell that smell. That's it's insane, what? I mean. Morris is becoming. Um I I'm not quite sure how to word it, but I mean, this is getting ridiculous with all this stuff. And this is still a tier one drug in the federal government.
That's right.
This is not hard blanch to the world. You take your little joint, you go across state line, you could be arrested. And federally arrested. I mean, let's be serious. And the people that are gonna be affected by events. You know, if you. If I moved into town and I moved next to a marijuana farm, I got no complaints. But I've lived there. Now you're gonna put one up and now. I have to smell this day after day after day, I don't believe that's right.
Let's, let's, let's keep the questions one at a time here and direct it to the board, please, not between ourselves. Uh Bill?
Well, just one more point, you know, come back to Benny, I respect what you guys do, but. I think you go back and you realize that, you know, that the town made a great mistake when they didn't ban all the stuff to start with. And as a town, if we make a mistake, but we can fix it as a town, so that's that's my point, let's try to work together and fix it before it gets out of hand.
Can I, can I tell you something? I'm not against the cultivation of cannabis. Okay. I went up to Nova Farm, I went up there twice. I looked at their farming operation. It is unbelievable how they farm. And how neat. And organized they are. Now, people talk about smell. I went up there. I didn't smell anything when they were, when they were processing it.
But when, when was that?
It was uh middle of September.
Cause my wife and I were there in October when they were cultivating and the stink was unbelievable.
So, yeah, but. Like I said, I don't think cultivation of marijuana is a bad thing. But that's just my. That's just my, that's just my opinion.
Even if, exactly, it's not your opinion, and it shouldn't be just your opinion, that's why we're all here and it should be about invention, so everyone should be entitled to an opinion.
I think once we.
Should express that opinion.
I think once we get all this straightened out. We'll have.
Concern, you mentioned earlier, and I'm not an attorney by any means, but I will say that. It does, it does bother me when we put something out there and you start the meeting by saying, oh, well, we need to change this. And we need to include this because we need to say grandfather, we need to do this. I feel like that gets us into trouble because the law, everybody can kind of take this and interpret it in a different way depending on how uh how good your attorney is. And when you talk about, oh, we're talking about not retail, not sale. You, I think you'll find that. When you do agree, right, to do, to have farming or this, you know, growing of cannabis. Once you lift those covers, you're gonna see a lot underneath there that eventually in two, three years from now, they're gonna be saying, oh, no, we can. We can actually offer it on our property, blah, 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 in other words, it will be retail, but they won't call it retail. So they'll be able to get away with it, so we wanna just have a vote that we just end any, any of it right now. No retail, we already voted, absolutely no, and now no growing and whatever that entails. So I don't wanna, I get the feeling that you're having your attorney look at it to make these changes because we already approved something and now we have to keep it. And by keeping that, it opens the door. To other things down the road, so it really concerns me. Is that a legitimate concern, I'm gonna ask you?
My concern is that we've already. Granted somebody with cannabis. Growing in town. Planning and zoning approved it?
I think did that, we all agreed, we didn't want to get a vote.
Well, uh I'm. And I I understand a lot of people say they don't read the newspaper.
But it's not.
They don't, they don't go on. They don't go on the website. Well, if you looked at planning and zoning, when this coming up back in April. They had it on planning and zoning website. Of meetings. They actually had a hearing. On this. Act after they awarded. The uh okay to grow it. They had a fifteen day appeal. Where people could go in and appeal. I was at the hearing. There were three people.
Yeah, and why is that?
There were three people.
That should have been a red flag that nobody was there.
There were people, there were, there were people there.
No one knew about it.
But there was only three people that stood up and spoke for.
People know about it. The reason we're all here is probably because we all got a text.
Okay, sure.
Well, I was gonna, you were talking about the meeting and I'm just gonna ask, are planning and zoning meetings closed or can anyone?
They're on Zoom or you can go in person.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're put on the board, uh the Bolton Board out there in the center of town?
Not in the center, I don't believe.
They uh they'll.
No.
I mean, that's, a lot of people don't go on the internet, a lot of people don't read, but. Everybody seems to drive by the four corners over here, we have a billboard out there and. That should have something on it about zoning and meetings and be some type of uh information to everybody.
John?
Well, just uh. Because I actually do go on the internet and I actually do look at the stuff. That the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow on their agenda, there is a letter. From. From a neighbor from that other property. Who is asking them to reconsider. That application based on all the things that came up on these meetings as far as. Whether or not that application was accepted properly as far as. Even following the building and zoning's own regulations as far as does the company have a license, was there a water? You know, uh treat whatever process. So. That's on the there a little bit too, I think, simply because of the information that's come out of these meetings. I think people. You know, uh look, if you don't look at the, it's plainly there, you know, it's there for anybody who wants to know when the meetings are. Uh but sometimes you get blindsided and I think this has caused enough of a stir and. Uh so that's gonna start stirring, it seems to be as well, they're gonna, they're gonna challenge. The neighbors are gonna challenge that original application, it seems. And that letters, if anybody wants to look at the letter, it's online. Look at the uh. Being the uh agenda for tomorrow.
This is a follow up to that. With two hundred thirty four people signed that petition. And I would say out of the two hundred thirty four, two hundred and thirty of them had no idea of what has gone on in this town. And I think if given a little more time, we would have had five or six hundred signatures on that.
Anyone else thing, no?
Oh, definitely too, when you, when you look around these towns, it's like, you know, you're not gonna see a cannabis farmer, but you're not gonna see one in Washington, you're not gonna see one in Rockspire, you're not gonna see one in Saltberg, you're not gonna see one in Lakeville. So like these out of town, out of state people came in and said, let's dump on Morris, cause we can, you know, pull the wool over their eyes. And we got caught with our freaking pants down, what happened, and we gotta fix it. I hope we all get together and fix it.
Bob?
Great question for you directly, Tom. Uh with this operation going, so would you personally or financially make any gain from this happening?
What operation are you speaking of?
This cannabis growing operation.
Any campus? No, absolutely not. John?
The reason why these people came to Morris. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is because uh we were on.
I know, I know, I know.
Of, I can't always forget.
Proportionally.
Just proportionally affected town. That's why they got the fellow from uh. What is still. Whatever the the one fellow showed from what a town Bristol, from Bristol, cause they needed, they needed him. To come in uh with with the company Nova Farms, because we were on that list. Which we should never have been on that list, that's something that I think you guys should have fought like tooth and nails to say, why the hell are we even on that list? So now we're not on that list anymore, so Nova Farms can't even use that as an excuse. I'm gonna use an excuse, I don't know if that's a proper legal word, to even come in anymore uh to do that. That's why that one got under the carpet.
Uh is there, I'm sorry, is there anyone online that would like to speak? Laker Scott? Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John McCormick and I'm an inventor to the Dorset. There, the most recent application was put in. I am watching Nova Farms, I believe it's them, have surveys going on very rapidly. It would appear that they're doing a lot of things in preparation to submit another proposal. And I am concerned that these delays are gonna allow them to go before planning and zoning. Before the town can vote, so that they too can fall under the grandfather clause that's being added to the petition. That was put in place that was signed by the. That is by personal opinion, based on being a voter. Through property, watching it. Nova Farms from out of the area is literally doing this, come on, knowledge right now, somebody that they're surveying. And in some of the letters back and forth that were released during the. Uh Freedom of Information Act, it read that Mr. Kenyon was going to be investments, Mr. Kenyon's the. Person in charge of Nova Farms. To move forward to put in another application, that's how I read it, I don't know if that can read, but that's why I'm here tonight to hopefully. Watch you guys doing a great job. Erica recused herself, which makes perfect sense, but hopefully you can coach the town, if this is what the town wants to vote, whether. I'm the only knucklehead that doesn't want it or everybody does. They get to vote in ways before only going to prove another applicant that will fall under the.
Thank you, appreciate. Yes, ma'am.
I do actually wonder, you know, over the years, we've been here forty years and and over the years. A dollar general win, and we got two breaks on our road and I said to my husband ten years ago, if we see double stripes go on our road, we're gonna probably move. And before that. You guys, you know, planning and zoning put allows a gravel pit to go down our street, so now we have tons of trucks. That I have to keep moving over and cars zooming by because of the double lineup. And it feels to me like, you know, you're gonna add this to the, with the smell and and what wor- worries me most is. Is the the traffic, the amount of traffic and and we're not just talking about the workers, we're talking about. People from Waterbury trying to get into the place and trying to rob it, you know, so you're dealing with that and it's coming down our roads, cause we're close to that. So now I have a gravel pit which should never have gone in. And now you're gonna add on to that on the other side. A cannabis farm, so are are we trying to make sure nobody moves to Morris anymore? You know, my husband and I talk about moving because we're so discouraged by what has been taking place over the past few years. It's horrible. And and it's terrible that we have to move. Because you guys and the planning and zoning make these decisions. That destroy everybody's. Living quality of living. I have to sit outside on my beautiful porch that we built and listen to trucks go by all the time or the pounding, you know. And so now you're, I'm gonna have to listen, smell the the fragrance of of the cannabis coming through. Or the, or the, the people coming by, driving by constantly, it it's just ridiculous, it used to be such a great small town. I probably moved here forty years ago. And now it's not. It's not like that anymore. And it's sad.
Anyone else?
I have to say one thing, you were asked if you were going to financially benefit from this, but there is a select person that is going to benefit. Future from this, so. Is that part of, does that come into play at all?
Is I don't understand your question.
You don't understand?
No, what is the question?
I think it's the same question, I'm sorry, I don't understand. I I think I have the same question that you have. Because I want to understand, my understanding is that. Erica Dorsett. Already they have chosen. Their property to use for this, Erica is a selectman of this town, I think there is some. I don't know how to say it, but I just don't feel that this is right. That she would then be the selectman, she would also be carrying on the cannabis, I I I don't know if it's like. It's that, it just bothers me totally, completely, that the selectman of the town. Would be the person who's taking over, you know, who wants to get the property there. It just. Doesn't seem like it's right to me.
Okay.
I don't know if it doesn't make sense, but. He doesn't understand it.
Sure.
I think she owns a farm, she's just as much right as anyone else to. Ask to do farming, you know, anyone in town can can make this request, I don't think we're being a selectment to. Uh you know, she's she's abstaining from voting, so. She has the much right to have. Grow what she, you know, to grow whatever she wants on her farm. But we're, what we're asking or what I'm asking is that we not allow anyone in town to grow marijuana or to process marijuana here, but. I don't think that she, I don't see her as doing anything that's. Thunked back, she she just happens to have the property and want to make her.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got, Tom, I'm sorry, I get rambling, but. This can still go forward. As a, right now today, I mean, two days now, zoning wants to vote on it and it can go through. Is that my understanding?
I'm not sure how the statutes, cause there's special statutes for this cannabis cultivation, the whole retail, everything that's listed there. I don't know how that. Conflicts or does not conflict with how planning and zoning uh accepts the applications or. Not, I'm not sure.
So what you're saying then is the only way to stop that is for us to have a vote. So when is that vote?
Uh that's, we will be talking with our attorney to figure out how quickly the timetable, we can move this along, you know, following statutes.
So when I leave, I can tell my husband that we're having a vote.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I, that's, that's been our intent, yeah. In the back.
Some time to advertise.
You need to get the word out, and it needs to be everywhere this morning.
Okay, uh we have another person like to speak.
Have you had a conversation with the chairman of planning and zoning to let them know what's going on?
I I talk with the uh zoning enforcement officer almost every morning. But we talked about.
Planning and zoning.
I don't see Dave Wick much at all, I do talk with Tony Dilly, the CEO. And he's in contact with David Wig all the time.
Well, let me rephrase, is the planning and zoning commission. Aware of. These last few meetings we've had to discuss getting this on the agenda for a vote?
I believe they are, cause I think they did talk about this at their last meeting. Did they have a discussion?
They wouldn't talk about.
They talked about it and they got as far as that, but.
My, my recommendation would be to go to the planning and zoning meetings.
I think that's.
Because I think that's, if they're gonna keep talking about these applications, I think one of us needs to bring up the fact that we're all need to vote on this.
People talk about it the last meeting, I don't know.
Is there anyone else, anyone else?
Things uh, you know, as we go along here, uh something you may want to think about when you start your budget for this year. Probably should up your legal fund potentially, because there's gonna be a lot of legal issues going on with the town. You're gonna be hiring attorneys for it, and secondly, you know, as being a board event member for fifteen years and we've worked so hard. Uh drug awareness, task force prevention, think about it, all these kids around here. And now we're talking about having marijuana farms in our town.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. Their motion to adjourn by forty five.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you.